Want to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for our regular meeting here in April the 24th. Good to see each and every one of you here. If you'll please stand, we'll have our prayer and our pledge of allegiance. Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this beautiful morning that you've given us the sunshine we have here in Rutherford County. Father, we're thankful for the many blessings that we do have, and may we always remember that those blessings do come from you. Father, we ask that you be with us within this meeting as we make decisions that concern the citizens of this county, that you give us guidance, deliberation, that is important to make things better. Father, we ask that you be with those that are unable to be with us here today that may have some illness, that you watch over the caretakers of those individuals and be with them. Father, we ask that you continue to guide us all, take care of us, and guide us. We offer this prayer in your son's holy name. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. You may be seated. Thank you, and it's good to see each and every one of you here. Before we begin, I want to just say we appreciate, I think we have members of the BZA here with us this morning. We welcome you here with us, and anytime you'd like to come and sit in with us, we appreciate that. We've got some discussion of business this morning we thought important for you to be here and listen as we get into our business session of our meeting. We'd like now to have our roll call and the termination of quorum.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Right.
Mike Kush.
Rest.
Lee Bogel.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Tim Thompson.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. We have here on your item four is approval of minutes. I don't think we have any minutes this morning, so we'll move on to item five, items withdrawn and deferred. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. There is one item that is on your agenda currently that we have removed. That would be under site plan submittals, the Middle Point Landfill RNG, which is renewable natural gas facility. They're still waiting on some documentation that's required for their application, so we have taken that off the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Begin now with item six, new business, A waiver request. Dalton France for France Construction LLC is requesting a waiver to the minimum lot size requirement, five acres, for property assessed by a private easement for property located along Canesville Pike, Tax Map 44 parcel 3.01. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good morning again, everyone. The applicant, as you stated, would like to divide the property into separate tracks, three tracks, to be exact. These tracks would be accessed via a private easement. However, the required minimum size for those tracks is five acres. The property itself is just under nine acres, so none of these tracks are going to meet that minimum size. We did discuss the possibility of them doing like a small cul-de-sac, or perhaps like a hammerhead, or something like that, but they wanted to try this route first. Mike's got the concept planned up on the big screens. It's also in your agenda packets on your iPads. Again, what we were thinking is they could do like a little, where Mike's kind of circling it there, do a little cul-de-sac there, where everyone would have its own road frontage, then they wouldn't have to have a waiver. There actually is a fire hydrant located, it's not shown on here, but there's one located right at the end of Cana Drive, and all the lots based on the frontage would be within a thousand, yeah, a thousand feet of the hydrant for this size of a subdivision. The remaining acreage to the right, which goes to Canesville Pike, would actually be given to one or both of those adjacent property owners just to make their lots larger, but their request was to have the smaller lots on the private easement. Again, we did talk to them about the possibility of doing that cul-de-sac turnaround, something like that, where they wouldn't need that, but this is the route they wanted to try to go first before moving forward. So, I'm not sure if anyone is here representing this. I'm looking out in the crowd, I don't see the applicant, but with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
I have a question for staff, please. Mr. Chair, Doug, this is how many lots on the easement? It appears to be two lots on the easement, is that correct?
The way they would draw it out, that's correct. There'd be one that would have road frontage, and then, yeah, that long, it would be a flag lot, and then the other two would access directly off of that easement. So technically, there'd be two.
And we typically allow three, up to three, under certain circumstances.
Correct, yeah, you're allowed to have up to three, but the thing they're asking for is the fact that none of these tracks are going to be under, over five acres, excuse me.
Gotcha, thank you.
Why did they not want to go the recommended cul-de-sac route?
Well, I don't want to speak for them, as I don't think they're here, but I'm just going to speculate that, to some extent at least, even though I said I wasn't going to do that, but I imagine cost is probably a factor in this.
You want a recommendation? Move to deny.
A motion to deny, and a second for the discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose, motion to deny, has been approved by the committee. Moving on now to item 6B, submitted for preliminary plan approval. One is hosted subdivision 23, 1003, three lots on 12 acres, zoned RM, located along Tiger Woods Way, just right construction, is the applicant. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you. This property is located at the end of Tiger Woods Way, which was built as part of the Village at Cedar Crest subdivision. There is a 292-foot cellular tower, fall zone easement on the property, as there is an existing cell tower on this property. The final plat for this property shows a 100-foot diameter turnaround area at the end of Tiger Woods Way, and Mike's circling it there on the map, but no cul-de-sac, as you can tell, has ever been constructed. It kind of dead ends, and you can see there's a driveway that runs off to 1273, Lot 51 there, kind of toward the back. We did inform this applicant, as well as some applicants in the past, because this isn't the first time that we've talked with folks about this, that any future development of Lot 51 would require that cul-de-sac to be constructed. There was some talk about the possibility of doing a hammerhead there, hammerhead design instead of a cul-de-sac. Ultimately, the applicant decided just to stick with the cul-de-sac design, as you see on the plans that are uploaded to your iPads. Really, our comments have been addressed, this plan is in good order. Now, there are some issues that may have to be handled with the final plat, you know, some of these accessory structures that might be on properties if this is recorded before a house is actually located on the property, they may have to get some special exception approval for that, but that's something we can work through at the final plat stage. But beyond that, the plan's in good order, and I'll turn it over to Mike if he had any additional comments on that.
No, we were good with the initial design.
Doug, I noticed a lot of notes and issues with that. They've all been addressed?
Yes, sir.
Very good. And staff is recommending preliminary plan at this time?
Yes, sir, they'll have to do construction drawings for the cul-de-sac, of course, and that'll have to be constructed before we see a final plat, but yeah, as far as the preliminary plan is concerned, it's in good order.
Move to approve the staff comments.
Second. Motion approved, and a second for the discussion. If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it is approved. Moving now to item 6C, submitted for final plat approval. Item one, Simmons Acres, 23, 2015, nine lots on 30 acres, zoned RM, located along Laskasses Pike. Simmons Builders Incorporated, applicant, Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you. Plan commissioners will recall this final plat from last month. We brought this forward, they're looking to divide it, as you see here, but there are a couple of easements that are being utilized for this. Most of these lots are going to be having their own road frontage, looking at this, like for lots three and four, but the issue that came up was how the maintenance of those common drives was going to be handled. There's, right, Mike's highlighting some of those on the screen as well. There are some larger tracks that are actually landlocked but access the easement, but they are large enough, they don't require any waivers. The only waiver that really was going to be required with this was some of these larger tracks in the back were going to be outside of 1,000 foot, well, 500 foot for this size for a fire hydrant, and you see on the plat that they've denoted those lots that would require that, and which ones would require the sprinkler systems. Now, with that, you'll recall this was deferred at the last meeting just because of the fact that nobody was here to talk about the maintenance of those common drives. We do have representation here today, so unless you have other questions, I'll be, of course, happy to answer those, but the applicant is present.
If the applicant would like to come forward, and I'd like for you to state your name and address for...
Good morning, Tommy Simmons, I'm the owner of Simmons Builders. This property, as he said, 30 acres, dividing into nine tracks. Seven of the nine have frontage. There are two larger ones in the back that do not, that are both over five acres.
Can you answer the question about the driveways? What we don't want is seven different driveways accessing Laskasses Pike.
Correct, there won't be. There are, seven of the nine tracks have frontage. There are three existing drives that are already there from older residences that were torn down before we bought the property, so we're utilizing the three existing drives, and there will be two additional new ones that will be put in. One on the Murfreesboro side of the existing home, there's an existing home that kind of sits right in the middle of the property on the front, right there. You can see that, actually, there's three other drives already coming in, one to the east side, and then two over there. So, we're going to use one that will be on the Murfreesboro side, right against the tree line, will be one new one, be a long one that goes all the way to the back service in the back, the five-acre track, and then, I think, two of the other ones, and then there'll be one new one on the, between the existing home and the existing drive you can see there. So, three existing already, we're only utilizing two new ones. There'll be an agreement between the owners, whichever ones are accessed. I think one of them will have three, will, to a certain point, will go back and actually be utilized by three tracks. The other two new ones are only going to be, have two common users of those.
Mr. Thompson.
Ben, I'm kind of new still to this and learning as we go. I know we spend a lot of time talking about fire trucks and emergencies getting in. I'm seeing a lot of these tracks where we've got long roads to get back to. Is that of a concern on these long lots to get emergency equipment in, get them turned around, and get them out? Because we're seeing a lot more of these driveways, seems like when we're trying to develop these. And then, the other question, I'll be quiet and just listen to staff, this is more for my information to know, but on fire hydrants, is that an option if it's available? That we would say we're not going to run the fire protection down there and let them go with the, I was of the understanding that the sprinkler systems was where you couldn't get fire protection, so help me understand what that's all about.
Well, as far as the first part of your question, Mr. Thompson, I'm going to defer to our Fire Marshal Josh Sanders as far as the access to those longer driveways and everything. Josh, if you could fill in on it.
Yeah, thank you, Doug. It is always a concern, anytime we have a long stretch of drive where we have minimal turnarounds, it's an issue. That being said, the biggest issues is ensuring we have a clear, wide enough, clear path of fire apparatus ingress, so make sure trees don't get overgrown, things like that. Having that minimum 20-foot width drive is the biggest thing that we want to make sure we can get there. It's a challenge getting out, but the biggest thing is us getting there, as long as we have a solid surface and it's wide enough, that's the biggest concern.
Now, regarding the second part of your question, the fire sprinkler becomes a requirement, I guess, if the lots themselves cannot be, in this case, located within 500 feet of a hydrant now. I don't want to speak for CUD, they've got someone here that can speak to this, or if I'm incorrect, hopefully they'll let me know that, but I don't think they would be in a position to extend a line all the way down one of these easements that would support a fire hydrant, just due to, you know, the fact there'd be a lot of, you know, stagnant water in the line and those kind of things. So, you know, the private lines are generally, you know, half inch, inch, whatever they are, they're not very big, so they can't handle the hydrant, but that's why they're located along the larger lines. So, if there's lots, like in this situation, when they're further in the back and landlocked like that, there's no way they can really practically get a hydrant within the required distance, that's when the waiver becomes necessary, and then the sprinkler requirements kick in for a subdivision of this size.
Mr. Chairman, I'm probably going to show some ignorance, and I apologize for that, but we've got, I don't know how many driveways, it's hard to even count them all. Why don't you just build a road?
We looked at that, the, we looked at trying to do a road up the center with some lots on the side. Where the road needs to be is right in the area where the soil for the septic area that makes the property feasible. We actually had a good amount of soil area, but it was basically a swath that ran right through the center of it, right where a road needs to be. Then, at that point, running the road through it, makes sense to do smaller lots, more lots. I considered that, it's just not really what I, it's not my niche, it's not something I wanted to, I didn't want to build a subdivision with 30 lots out there, so.
Other questions for the applicant? If not, thank you, sir. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve with the caveat that the driveway easements, cross-access, and maintenance agreements be written into the deeds of the contracts of the property.
I have a second. Got a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to ask staff, this meets all county requirements at this time? Yes or no?
Yes, but they do require the waiver for the fire hydrants, because some of those lots in the back are too far away from the 500 for this size of a subdivision, this number of lots.
Do I need to amend that motion?
I would, if you were going to, I'd include the waiver request.
I'd like to amend that motion to include fire hydrant waiver.
For those lots that require it, yeah.
Correct, thank you.
Discussion? I have a second. Second. We have a second upon that amendment. Discussion upon the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Oppose? We'll call for a roll call vote upon the amendment.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yeah.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Lee Bogel.
Yes.
Charlotte P.
No.
Trey Gooch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
No.
Tim Thompson.
No.
Pettis Reed.
Yes. You now have a motion with the amendment. On this one right here, I'll also have a roll call vote upon that motion. As amended.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
No.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Bogel.
Yes.
Charlotte P.
No.
Trey Gooch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yeah.
Chip Pinion.
No.
Tim Thompson.
No.
Pettis Reed.
Are there any other suggestions, or where do we go from here?
Well, at this point, there was a motion for approval, that motion was, did not, well, didn't carry, because it didn't have the number of yes votes that it needed, so right now, it's just opened back onto the floor for additional discussion.
Floor for discussion.
Or another motion.
You don't have to have another motion. It just doesn't go anywhere if you don't have another motion.
We have to have something, either, it just can't sit here, as of right now, it's either, right now, there is, the lack of a approval doesn't mean it's automatically denied, and Nick, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct, the item is still before the body, and needs to have either further discussion or a motion. Either way, there can be another motion to approve it, or a motion to deny it, or if you need additional information in order to act on the application, you could do a motion to defer.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to interject here. I guess the question is, what is the issue that we have with it? It seems to meet the regulations. If the issue's the driveway, just the driveway access, then we have the developer here, perhaps he can address that somehow at this time, if we know what the issue is.
Commissioner P.
My issue is, I think it's a poor design for the area that it's in. I think it could be better planned, it's a high-traffic area, a high-dense area, I think it could be better planned.
I would agree with Commissioner P. Look at those driveways, put in a road, make it work, if you have to reduce lots or whatever you have to do, but make it a subdivision that is better planned than this one, it's just not a good plan. The safety issues also concern me. Motion to deny.
Motion to deny. Go have a second. Have a second. Further discussion? A motion to deny, or call for the vote?
Jim Aberwater.
No.
Excuse me, Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
No.
Lee Bogel.
No.
Charlotte P. No. Trey Gooch.
No.
David Jones. Chip Pinion. Tim Thompson.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Commissioners, we got to have something here.
Mr. Chairman, what was the vote count on the motion to deny?
Mr. Chair, I've seen us in the past approve at least one project that comes to mind, where they combined several of the lots into one driveway, and I see that opportunity, you have one, two, three, four, five on the left side, looking at the picture, on the left side, so from the road it would be on the right side, of the existing home. If all of those were combined into one driveway with a cross-access easement, that's something that we've done before, is that, is that an option? Does anybody have any opinions on that?
And Mr. Aberwater, forgive me, I was talking with our legal counsel there while you were talking, if I understood what you were saying correctly, you're saying rather than have two driveways, have one common drive, is that kind of what you were getting at?
Yes, that would be, to the west side of the existing house, have one common driveway. So, you wouldn't be adding any driveways, you'd still have three driveways like you have now.
But they would primarily be accessing the one, as opposed to the others?
Correct.
Okay, okay. That is, I mean, now, of course, the applicant might want to chime in to this as far as, you know, the ability to possibly go back and rework this a little bit and bring something else back. You know, I don't want to speak for him, obviously, he's here, but that is, I think that is an option, but Tommy, go ahead.
It is, we can eliminate some of the accesses. We were, we were doing this, it's kind of bouncing act, eliminate entrances off of the highway, or put another house per driveway. So, what we had come up with, we thought adding two new ones to the existing ones that were there was a reasonable case, but if that's an issue, it doesn't have to be that way. We can combine some of those and have a, I guess, a, I won't say bigger, nicer, but a driveway that accesses more, more tracks per drive and cuts down on the access numbers on Highway 96. So, if you saw, I think, the street view they were just showing a second ago, it actually still showed two of the old structures that were torn down last year before they ever sold the property initially, that one, and the one more to the east side of it, so. And there were some accessory structures in the back also. All those are gone now, the only thing that's left remaining is the one ranch-style house in the center with that drive.
There, I have a question. I think one of the questions we asked last time this came before us is, what is to prevent, I mean, you have all these lots with road frontage, what if one doesn't want to share a driveway? And, you know, they have right to make their own, that was the question. So, we, you know, we could have seven driveways. What's your opinion of that?
Well, I mean, from our standpoint, really, nothing. You know, if they were able to talk with the state, and the state gave them their permit, then, yeah, I mean, there really ain't much we could do in that situation, but I don't know, Tommy, have you had any thoughts beyond, beyond that? I don't think we could stop them from trying.
We've done this a couple of times in the past where we had, not the number of this, but smaller developments with, say, three tracks accessing with one drive. It seems once it goes in and it's established, the house is built, everybody's happy with it, and then nobody wants to kind of go on their own and put their own drive, especially if utilities are run through easements and common utility easements, that type of thing, so, electric service in each one, so. And our intention is, we will have, say, for water service, it's not a main line that's running back where everything branches off of it. Each house has its own water meter, just if it was, you know, any other track with frontage. They're all accessed at the road in the CUD easement.
We're talking about combining driveways now. When does that not become a driveway and become a road? I keep asking about a road. Why don't you eliminate all the driveways and put in a road, right down the side there, if all of them would have access to the, to the...
To the lots.
Why don't you put in a road, a road that could be maintained? A road that could be maintained, either by the county or by homeowners or so. Why don't you eliminate all the driveways and put in a road? That side there. Maybe it's impossible, it's just a question.
I think that's basically what we're talking about doing at this point.
I keep hearing driveways. I'm talking a road, not a driveway. Put in a road. R-O-A-D, not driveway. Put in a road. All the houses have access to that road. Can that be done?
Can be done.
Mr. Chairman, I move to defer, if it's okay with the applicant to come back with a different plan next month.
That'd be all right with you, sir?
Any other options?
Okay. We have a motion to defer. Do we have a second to defer, to allow the applicant to work on this plan? Have a second? Further discussion?
Doug, it's already been deferred once. Is this okay?
Well, I was gonna chip in with a little bit of discussion. If the applicant's okay with a further deferral, I think it's fine, but even if he's not, the state law requires that any plat that comes before the commission after its initial consideration has to have action on it, either up or down, within 60 days. If I'm doing my rough math calculations right, this came before us on March the 27th. The next meeting that we would consider this would be at the, May 22nd meeting. I believe that's within 60 days anyway. So, I think, from that standpoint, I think you're fine, but if the applicant is okay with the deferral, then, you know, the time really doesn't make any difference.
Motion to defer was to come with a different plan and not the same plan. Got that? Is that okay with staff?
Yes, I think that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. So, we're looking for a different plan to come forward at the next time. All right, item two, Prairie Sunset Subdivision, 23, 2023, six tracks on 99.22 acres, zoned RL, located along Taylor Road. George and Tina Lotterback are the applicants. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This particular subdivision isn't terribly unlike the one we just considered. They're proposing to split six tracks, all of which are going to be five acres or larger. Tracks one, two, five, and six will be accessed via a private access easement, and you can see, they've got two different ones, kind of, they'd share a common drive amongst all, all the lots. And lots three and four would have the road frontage. Minimum pad elevations have been established for some of these tracks. Tracks two and four floor elevation still need to be established. That's something that we have had conversations with the applicant's design team on, and they already in the process of taking, making those changes. Since this is a six-lot subdivision, the minimum fire hydrant distance is 500 feet. Correspondence with CUD indicates that a hydrant can be supported at this location. However, like the last final plat we just looked at, there are going to be some lots that are going to be outside of that 500 feet, so they are going to have to have the sprinkler systems, despite the fact that a hydrant can be installed there. With that, like I said, as, those were the main comments that we had, and the applicant's design team is, is aware of those and would make any necessary changes before the final plat is recorded, should this be approved. But, like I said, this, this isn't really a whole lot unlike what we just considered. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. John Kelsey with Huddleston Steel is here to answer any questions that may be on this particular application.
Commissioners, questions?
Well, make sure I heard right on that last proposal going down in the back lots here. We're talking about a driveway 20 feet wide, correct?
I don't know if they actually gave a dimension on the plat for what, now, what, if that's what it needs to be, you know, as far as the, for emergency access and everything, they'll do what they have to do for that.
Just from my knowledge, I like to know that we're 20 feet and they can turn around once they get back in here. I'm very familiar with this piece of property. I've cut silage and hunted on this piece, so, very knowledgeable about it.
Do you also like to talk to the applicant on this one? Okay. Advocate, or anyone like to come forward? Right back here.
Morning. John Kelsey, Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You would walk me through this design. How many lots do you have? And how many are accessed to the road? And how many have to have long driveways?
Sure. Let's see, could we put up a copy of the plat there, please? All right, so, lots, excuse me, let me get a little here. All right. So, walking through this, lots three and lot four will actually have, own the 50-foot strip. Lot one and lot two will have access off of that 50-foot strip that lot three will own, and lot... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Just move that mic close to you.
Yeah, there we go. Everybody hear me? Okay. Yes, so lot three will own the 50-foot strip. Lot one and two will have access off of it. And lot four will own the 50-foot strip. Lot five and six will have access off of it. Of course, there will be an HOA in place for the maintenance of the driveway.
But there are two separate driveways, right?
That is correct.
I have the same question. What's the difference between two driveways and a road going down through there?
There's really nothing. What it is, is we are trying to abide by the county's rules and regulations as far as giving these 50-foot of road frontage. Asking for a waiver. If one driveway needed to be placed down through here, it very well could be, and that is a possibility.
If you put a road down the middle of it, you could access every lot from that road?
That is correct.
I have the exact same objection that I had before. Put in a road. Put in a road that could be maintained.
Maintained? That's, that's exactly what we, I can suggest to Mr. Lotterback to do. Put in one driveway, going back to all of these lots. But we still have to show the two 50-foot strips, per the county rules and regulations.
Josh, if they put in a road, you could access those back lots a lot more easier than you could what is considered two different driveways?
Absolutely, sir.
I don't know how to say this, other than, I would make a motion to approve if there were a road installed versus the driveways, including all staff comments.
Including all staff comments. And this road, just to be clear, would this be just a, basically a maintained road? Or would it have to be a county-maintained road?
Yeah, that, that's what I want to know, 'cause...
Mike, I don't care.
Well, we should care.
As long as, as long as it's a road, if the HOA wants to maintain it, I don't care. If they want to turn it over to the county, I don't care. As long, as long as it's a road, that somebody's responsible to maintain it.
Well, I'm, all I want to point out the obvious is, if it's a county road, then that falls under Greg Brooks', and taxpayers' money's going to be used to maintain that strip of road, versus if it stays a driveway, the developer's going to pay for that maintenance from here on out, not us.
Or the homeowners.
Or the homeowners. So, you're basically shifting the responsibility from county to developer, so that's a big ask, and I want you to think about that before you just throw that out there.
What I'm throwing out there is, any subdivision that's built, is built just like that. It's turned over to the county at some point in time, after it's built to county standards. This should be no difference, Mike. It should be no difference. Once again, I'm talking about a safety issue and a plan that makes sense. You know, building two driveways doesn't make any sense. Put in a road. It needs to be a road there. Whether it's a county road or a private road that's maintained by the HOA, it, it makes no difference to me, but it needs to be a road.
Doug, can you speak to what he was referencing, county regulations perspective?
Do you want me just to go ahead and...
You made that as a motion. Did we have a second?
I don't know. My motion was to approve if they changed those two driveways to a road, with access, with all of the properties having access to that road.
Okay, so, we can get discussion. Do we have a second to this motion?
I, I want to second it, but I've got some questions about a private road.
Right, and I'm gonna, as long as we have, I just wanted to get the second on record before we talk.
Okay, we've got the second back here, so we can make this discussion, so we can...
Let me just make sure I'm understanding a couple of things before I make any comments. John, is there going to be two separate driveways? Is there going to be one driveway just between the two access easements?
There will be one driveway between the two accesses.
Okay, thank you. Now, the, the discussion about the road, okay? If it's going to be a privately-owned road that's shared by all six lots, they can do cross-access easements like they're showing on here, for all the lots to access that. If you want this to be a county road, built to county standards and then taken over by the county, that's going to have to put this into a whole different category. That, that's, that becomes a major subdivision, and what we're proposing, or what the applicant's proposing today, we couldn't just approve that subject and then building a county road. We would have to bring that back as a preliminary plan, have to go through construction drawings, those kind of things. Now, the reason I asked him about the, the number of drives, and if there was just going to be one driveway shared between the two access points, is our regulations allow, as we talked about earlier, you can have up to three accessing a private easement exclusively. Now, that, that's why they've done what they've done here. They've got two 50-foot access easements that go way, you know, the, the actual property go way in the back for those two larger lots, and then those smaller lots, which, of course, they're all over five acres, but those smaller tracks toward the front, they've got two off the one to the south, they've got two off the one to the north. Technically, that does meet our requirement. Okay, that, that's, that is, that is compliant. If they wanted to build one road, which is basically a driveway, I mean, that's what it's going to be, it's going to be a private drive back there, and everybody has shared access to it, as far as we're concerned, that's fine. Now, if you're talking about a county road back there, building a road, it would have to have a cul-de-sac, it can only be 1,600 feet linear without a waiver, I mean, there's going to be a lot more that goes into that, 'cause this is a very deep piece of property. It's hard to tell by looking at this, but some of these measurements, even from Taylor Lane to the first lot, I think it's about 1,000 feet. It's hard to tell by, was it?
1,400.
1,400, right. So, the cul-de-sac would have to be, you know, no longer than, you know, a couple hundred feet past that, without a waiver. So, I, I think we might be trying to say the same thing here, as far as the development of this track, but, you know, hearing what John was saying about there is going to be one common drive, it's just going to be split between the two access easements. I mean, that is something that we have seen in the past, but, which, which I think is kind of what you guys were going for with the last application as well, so, but that's, I just wanted to throw that out there. I may have muddied the waters a little more, but I just wanted to at least get that out there for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I need, what is the definition driveway, road, county road? I know county road is paved, curbed, but what's the difference in, I know driveway can be gravel. What's the definition of the road in between?
Well, a driveway, if it's just a private drive to a house, I mean, we see a lot of gravel drives in the county, that's not unusual. A private road, if we ever see a development that has private roads, like the Del Webb community is a good example, you know, they got a plan development approval for that. Their roads are all going to be private, but they are required to be built to county standard. It's just the county doesn't maintain them at that point. Of course, a county road is built to county standard, and the county does take that over and does maintain that. I think that's kind of the primary difference. Now, what they're talking about here is really, kind of falls along, kind of falls in between the driveway and the road. You know, they're going to have a common drive, again, which we've seen before, and the easements are accessing the number of lots they're required to. They're not required to do an official road, if you will, even though they're sharing access between the lots. That's, that's simply not how we've enforced it over the years. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but, okay, well, I'm sorry.
I'd like to jump back in here on this, 'cause I don't want to complicate what I know about this. I see a considerable amount of difference between this particular plat and the previous plat. We're talking about off Las Cassas Road, where Taylor Lane is well off Highway 99, probably two miles, three miles. This is very rural. If someone buys in here, if this, it looks like to me, these hurdles, this says final plat approval. Somebody's signed up on this probably two, three different times. But in my mind, this is quite a bit of different setup. If I'm going to buy in here, and I know it's gravel, or if I know it's asphalt, that's my prerogative to do so. And I'm going to kind of go back where Mike was at, on who's funding this and who's paying for it. I get that we'd like to have a road through there, but if I'm buying, and we're talking about buying in rural Rutherford, it's about as rural as you're going to get. You can see by the overhead shot there. These folks, I think, live out that way. Neighbors live out there. People live that's doing this. They bought, invested out here. They don't put asphalt down, they're going to deal with the dust themselves. And if I buy in there, I know I'm going to be dealing with the dust. That's my choice to buy in here. Got a lot of folks that would love to live down a gravel driveway, on a huge acreage lot, and they'll sell it. The biggest thing that I'd see on this entire project would be the elevation, and we hit on that, make sure we're not in a flood zone, back there in the back, some low-line stuff. But again, there is a considerable amount of difference between this plat and that other plat, in my opinion.
Please remember, these are over five acres. They are larger tracks.
Mr. Chairman, or for the applicant, as it stands right now, though, the intentions of this as brought before us today is to be one single drive down through here.
That is correct.
To me, it doesn't matter if it's paved, if it's gravel, that's completely up to you, but as far as, in, in reference to Mr. Phillips's, Commissioner Phillips's discussion, just the one road, which is what I prefer as well. If that's the plan for this, is to have one road, and it meets county standards, and the HOA's going to take care of it, is that correct, as far as the maintenance of it?
That is correct.
But it's one access off of, I'm good with that, and I think it's what we should do.
Okay. I have a, I have a, kind of a different impression after what Mr. Thompson has just kind of gone through. Whether you call it a driveway or a road, is it going to be paved? Or is it going to be gravel?
That would be up to the developer.
It's not, I will say, it's not required to be paved. If this were a actual private road that was approved as part of a plan development, then yeah, it would have to meet county standards. This is still, while we calling, I mean, you can call it a driveway, county road, that they're kind of interchangeable at this point, but the way the regulations are written for what he's trying to do, they're, the county does not require the paving there.
Will it be a private road?
It's a common road or a common driveway that several lots are going to access. Who's going to maintain that? If it's gravel, and 10 years from now, it's got potholes in it that would sink a pickup truck, who's going to maintain that?
As I was saying, that would be up to the homeowners, and of course, there would be some documentation whenever they purchase the lots, stating that they are responsible for the maintenance of that driveway, whether it be asphalt, gravel, concrete, whatever material. whether it be asphalt, gravel, concrete, whatever material.
Once again, my big issue is, is this a sustainable, long-term plan? And that road is the issue for me, or that driveway is the issue for me. 10 years down the road, are we putting together a good plan for that community? And I don't, I don't really foresee that what is, what is proposed there is a good, long-term solution for those homeowners that are going to be buying in there. Because you're going to be pitting neighbor against neighbor. One says, "I'm not going to do it." The other one says, "You've got to do it," and he's, "I'm not going to do it. Sue me." That's what's going to happen. I know it, and everybody else knows it that's in here. I'd like to see, whether you call it a driveway or a road, that somehow it is maintained in a sustainable way. I don't see a gravel fitting that. I'd like to see it paved. I'll, I'll be happy to remove my motion that a road be put in, simply because of some of the discussion that's happened here. I'll be happy to remove that and allow somebody else to, to make a motion, if the second.
You're removing your motion?
If the second will...
You're removing your second? Yes. I haven't gotten into discussion, but I'm going to get into discussion right now. I've just asked Mr. Demossi, does the plans also state within there that this is a private road? It's to be maintained by the individuals, and it will be within the deeds of the individuals who buy the lots, stating that this is a private road, it's not a county road, and that when they buy these properties, that they are responsible for these roads? And I want that totally understood, that it's in those deeds, because I'm telling you all, I'm a commissioner in a rural area out this way, and I've got two of these around me. And I've had people on my front porch for years that's come to my house wanting a county road in their developments. I know exactly what Chairman Phillips is over here saying. They come to my house and says, "When is the county going to fix my road?" Now, I'm just telling you, if I sound a little up, I'm telling you, because I've had to deal with this. They come there and says, "I'm getting tired of dust on everything I have." "I'm tired of the front end of my car I'm having to align every other day." And they come to me, and they say, "When is the county going to pave this road?" And I have to tell them, "That's not a county road. That's a private road for your development. That's the way it was set up by your developer, and that's the way it is. I can't do a thing about it." And you know who they are mad at? Me. You're not doing anything for me. Now, one of those developments has paved that road. It cost those people several thousand dollars to bring that road up to county standards. The county didn't pave it, they paved it. Within that area, I think there's something like 13 or 14 houses. You know how many people chipped in to paving that road? Six. But they got the road paved. Now, the other one has not. And by the time that it has been worn down, there are bluff rocks in there now, there's a little bit of everything. But yet, new people have, they've sold the houses, new people have moved in that didn't know the history which you're creating today. I want you to understand, we're creating that history today. But that's important, that we place this within those deeds and within this plan here. Now, as chairman, I probably shouldn't be saying this, and my counsel over here may be telling me, "No, you probably shouldn't be saying this." But I'm just telling you from experience, what I've dealt with in the prior, that it's important, we place these things within here to warn these people, this is what determination was. So I'm just telling you commissioners where, where this is and where I'm coming from.
Mr. Chairman, not only are you chairman, but you're a planning commissioner, too. Would you feel comfortable if a motion was made that that driveway or that that road be paved?
You know, if we're going to go ahead and place it within that plat, saying this is a private road, and this is for the development, I don't think it matters. Because if they pave it, you're not setting the standards. It's all depends if that road, what standards you're going to place that road on. How will the standards of that road be placed, Mr. Demossi?
This would still be considered, it would not be considered a private drive or a private road from the viewpoint of looking at it, does it have to meet county regulations? It would not. Based on our regulations today, we would still consider this just a driveway. So from our standpoint, does it matter if it's going to be paved or gravel? It really doesn't. Now, again, I go back, not to muddy the waters, but I go back that if this were an approved private road in a planned development, then yes, we would expect that to be the case. But in this situation, it doesn't matter if they pave it or not from the county's standpoint.
Based on what I just heard, it meets current standards, the way it's presented. We're on final reading. I'm going to move, we approve it as submitted with staff comments as needed.
Have a motion to approve. Have a second.
Did, did you say?
Have a second.
Mr. Chairman, did you say this will, and I guess is where I'm still, either I'm missing it or something, is this going to have an HOA tied to it? Yes or no?
That is correct. That is correct. It will have an HO tied to it.
How does that change the, the road aspect?
It doesn't. There's regulations in our subdivision regulations that state they have to have some sort of a maintenance regime, for lack of a better word, some way to maintain the road for perpetuity, and that would be on the property owners, not the county.
Mr. Chairman, one, I know you're thinking about New Dawn Road. Is that correct? Is that one of them? Was that, do they have HOA, do you know?
Has an HOA?
Do they have an HOA?
Not really.
I mean, so they never did form one per that development?
Well, the developers formed one. But since that time, they've had such a change of people in there that have, they had a lot of new people.
Kicked them out.
And the developer, who knows where he's at. So, I mean, they change. I mean, it just changes, and that's just what you've got. We've got them all over the county like this.
One thing I want to mention, too, is the developer actually plans on building out here as well. His own personal house.
But we have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion?
Does that motion include all of the things that you mentioned as it relates to the deeds being blah, blah, blah?
It's already in there.
Well, they have to provide, like I said, it has to be based on our subdivision regulations and everything. The fact that they've got these multiple tracks off this easement, they have to be able to show that there is some sort of a maintenance plan go along with it. So, that's part of it, yes.
That was the intent of my motion, to make sure it be recorded on the deeds, yes.
Mr. Chairman, does that motion include one single dri, or one single driveway or access splitting both easements?
As presented.
As presented.
Which, as I understand it, again, was one single driveway for all the lots.
Thank you.
Yes. If not, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Chair, does that also include, I'm assuming it also includes the fire sprinkler waiver? I believe that was requested as part of that.
That would need to be part of it.
Subject to staff comments.
Yes, to staff comments.
Thank you.
And again, the applicants, where we, John and I discussed this last, late last week, about the notes that would have to be put on there. He's already working on that part of it.
Call the roll.
Tim Aberwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Bogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P. Trey Gooch?
Yes.
David Jones? Chip Pinion? Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Curtis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving now into submitted for site plan approval. Item one has been removed. We're into item two. This is SR Christiana PV Solar Farm 2331. Construction of a 3.25 M watt solar photovoltaic facility on approximately 43 acres on PUD located along Christiana Road. SR Christiana applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. This property was rezoned for a solar farm by the Board of Commissioners back in August of last year. This site plan that's submitted appears to be consistent with the pattern book. As you can see from the site plan, most of this site is going to be comprised of the solar panels. There'll be some additional components for the electrical transmission. Wherein this electricity will be fed directly into the Middle Tennessee Electrics Grid. We did have several comments on this. We did send these to the applicant's design engineer. Those comments have been addressed. Overall, we feel this plan is in good order, and we do have some representatives here if there are questions for the project. But beyond that, we'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Doug, didn't we talk about the buffering of this? That was a lot of questions, I believe, at the public hearing.
Yeah, you can kind of see along the frontage there, they're putting, yeah, where Mike's highlighting, they're putting buffers there. There's a pretty significant amount of trees, especially in the back, but they're augmenting some of those areas for the, just for buffering purposes, for visibility, lack of, for the surrounding properties to try to block visibility.
But this is in good order, and it meets the plan?
I believe it is. I believe it's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Motion approved, with staff comments. Have a second. Further discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? It is approved. We move now into item seven, staff reports and other business. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The primary item we have today for the staff reports and other business has to do with the fees presentation for planning and engineering, and also, it doesn't say this on your agenda, I apologize, but also for our Building Codes office. We do have a PowerPoint presentation that we're going to run through. And this presentation is also on your iPads. It's a PDF on your iPad, so it works a little better that way. But what we'll do is kind of, just kind of run through the history of this just a little bit before I get into the slides. The, we've been asked to, through the Public Works Committee, to look at the ability to possibly change our fee structures and things. Of course, we'll get into what our current fees are, and basically kind of do a quick overview of the presentation we made at Public Works earlier this month, and then what our proposed fee structure looks like. And then I'll turn it over to Building Codes and have Tanya do the same from the Building Code standpoint. So. So first, we'll talk about the planning and engineering fees. Again, this is all on your iPad, but our current fee structure, as you see, you know, I've got it broken down to preliminary plan, waivers, site plans, you kind of see what we did. Construction plan and land disturbance is on a different sheet. Now, I'm not going to get too much into that, partially because I don't think I uploaded that to the SharePoint site. But also, the changes that we're proposing to make, and I'll let Mike go into that a little bit more, is going to simplify that quite a bit. So, when we presented this to the Public Works Committee earlier this month, our, kind of our task, if you will, was to try to find possible new revenue sources and possibly change the sources that we already have, looking at the fee structures that we currently have set up. So, we did some brainstorming in our departments. And from planning and engineering standpoint, we looked at things like, things that we don't currently charge for right now are construction inspections, for instance. You know, after construction of a subdivision begins, road construction, our inspectors are out there a fairly significant amount of time doing inspections on the work that's being done. Looking at as-built record drawing reviews, this is after the subdivision is complete, before we would release lots. We ask for as-built drawings from the engineer of record. That way, we can look at, to make sure that what they said they're going to build is what was actually built, and, you know, take care of any issues that might result as a, the findings from that. Sometimes, you know, that we do run into situations where plats expire or site plans expire because of the amount of time that's gone by, possibly looking at a reapproval fee. Right now, we don't charge any. Some other things we talked about, maybe additional plat and plan review after two reviews. Pretty much every plat and plan that we look at, I should say plat and plan, sorry. Plat and plan that we look at right now has, goes through a two-review process, initial and a second review. A lot of times, most of the comments are caught after that. If there is anything after that, it's usually very minor. But especially with construction drawings, there may be a need for additional reviews after two, because some of these get pretty involved. Possibly looking at pre-application due diligence meetings. These are like the meetings that happen prior to any kind of a submittal to our office. Maybe looking at plat addressing, you know, we handle the addressing for the unincorporated areas of the county. Right now, we don't charge for that. And then the last thing was a stormwater fee. Now, that's something that's, that's a whole nother ballgame right there. That's just put on there, because that's why we kind of have the double asterisk on there, that, that there's more discussion needed for that. So, along with that, we also looked at the possibility of maybe making changes to how we currently charge for the items that we do charge for our zoning compliance fee. Some ideas were charging an increased fee for single-family homes, accessory dwelling units, additions of living space, basically anything that's a living area, heated or cooled space. And then charge a separate, but maybe lower fee for detached accessory structures like garages, pools, decks, those kind of things. We also looked at the possibility of staggering our fees for plan development applications based on the size, either square footage of a non-commercial or the number of lots. Also, looking at our preliminary plan, final plat, construction drawing, site plan, fees are existing fees, possible ways to change those, and then also our land disturbance fees, looking at some possible changes to that. So, all of that being said, this is kind of what we, as our, I'll say first stab, but this is a refined stab, if you will, at our current fees, looking at proposed fees. Now, this is broken up into several different slides, and we'll take as much time on these as we need. We can go back to whatever we need to. You can see on the, as you're looking at the screen, on the left-hand side, you'll see what our current plat and plan fees are for preliminary plans and final plats. You'll see the amount, base fees, $500 for a preliminary plan or a major final plat, and then it's a per-lot fee of $100. The minor fees, again, those are those that don't require any utility extension, any right-of-way roads, anything like that. There's a base fee of $150 with a $75 per-lot fee. If you go immediately to the right in that other chart, you'll see what we're proposing essentially is doubling in per-lot fee, a little bit more than doubling, but the fees that we currently charge. Looking at a preliminary plan fee of 1,000 with a per-lot fee of 250, that would be the same for the major plats. And then upping our final plat, our minor final plats from 250 base, from the 150, and then $100 per lot instead of 75. For site plans, our current base fee, again, is $500 plus basically 2 cents per square foot for non-residential area or $10 per residential unit. What we've proposed is to raise that, and that should, I apologize, I'm seeing typos in here. I looked at this so much that, I just was blind to them. But, that should say site plan base fee would be $750. And rather than do a separate non-residential versus residential breakdown for additional costs, we would just change it all to all square footage, be it residential or non-residential, at basically a dime per square foot. And I'm going to run through some examples here in just a few minutes to kind of show you some of the cost differences of what that would be. For zoning compliance, this is probably one of the biggest ones we changed, quite frankly, because at a $50 fee right now, we see a lot of these every year. Last year, we saw almost 1,100 zoning compliance forms come through our office for someone wanting to do an accessory structure, a new house, a pool, whatever. So that fee for $50 has been the same since about 2007. So what we're proposing, again, looking at anything that requires living area, a new residential structure or house, any addition, or if it's like an accessory dwelling unit, we would bump that to 250. And a lot of the reason we look at that, raising that, is because the standard of review that we use now versus what was done back in 2007 is a lot higher than it used to be. Every one of these is looked at by our engineering team. The ones that planning has to look at, you know, from a setback standpoint, we look at those very closely as well. But Mike's looking at them, and his team's looking at them very closely as far as elevations. Are there any issues? Even if it's not a flood plain, is it a local flood area? Does it need a certain floor elevation, a pad elevation? What about your AC units and those kind of things? So we would have a higher standard for the new living area. So that'd be 250 per zoning compliance form for those particular items. But then a lesser fee, like we discussed a moment ago, of just $150 for anything that's a detached structure, like a garage, a shed, a pool, those kind of things. So, still have an enhanced level of review, just not to the extent of we would see with a house. For rezonings and BZA, which is one of the reasons we wanted the BZA members here as well, just to kind of see where we were going with this. You can see our current fees. Rezoning for a non-plan development, 750, plus a thou, and then it's $1,000 for a plan development. Anything that's a special exception or a variance would be $600 currently. Administrative appeals are 100. And what we're proposing is to raise the non-PUD rezoning fee to 1,000. Keep the base fee for PUDs the same at 1,000, but require that they pay a per-lot fee of $10 for residential, and then a square footage amount for the non-residential space. So it's not just $1,000 for PUD would be based on. So if we get a 200 lot subdivision, maybe you can do the math after that. It would require an extra $2,000 as far as the, the per-lot fee for the plan developments. The border zoning appeal fees, we would raise to $750, administrative appeals up to 250. I will say this, as far as the administrative appeals are concerned, I've been working for the county now since 2006. I think we've seen... I think we've seen one administrative appeal that I can remember. We could make that a million dollars. It's not really going to make that much of a difference in our funding for the year. We just don't see that many of those, which is not a bad thing. Some new fees that we're not currently charging, we talked about the address assignment fee. We would look at that as $5 per address assigned. For situations that, when we're subdividing, I'm sorry, when we're addressing a new subdivision, we would just collect that fee prior to the recording of a plat. For a site plan submittal, we would require, we would collect that before we would stamp it approved. And for the zoning compliance process, that would just be added on to the zoning compliance fee for a new house or accessory dwelling unit. Of course, if they're just doing accessory structures, something like that, there's not an address required there, so there would be no fee. And then we talked also about site plan and subdivision plat reapproval fees. We, since we don't charge for that now, we're proposing to just charge the base fee for each category. So, if it's a site plan, it'd be 750. If it's a preliminary plan, it'd be 1,000. If it's for the final plat, the same, 1,000. Because there is still a little bit of review in those to make sure nothing has changed, but it doesn't require the same standard of review. We wouldn't have to do the per-lot fee in that. And I'm going to turn it over to Mike for this part of it, for the construction review fees.
Okay, thank you, Douglas. So, a few years ago, you might recall that we started charging a construction plan review fee, something we had never done before. One of the things that we started reviewing was critical lot grading plans, and that is where you've got, you want to build a house on a steep slope, or there's some other challenging issue where there's the properties littered with sinkholes or, or some other critical item that we have to have closer eyes on. So, originally, we set that at $150 per lot, and then we're proposing to up that to 250. Land disturbance fees, we tried to get everything back to apples-to-apples. A lot of the construction plans reviews were set up on a per-acre calculation basis. So, we went back and looked at a few projects, and essentially, we were charging about $85 per lot. And now, we'd like to up that to $250 per lot for residential, commercial, big commercial development. You'll have one lot, so what we're looking at is a $1,000 base fee and $250 per acre. So, if we had another big industrial warehouse complex come in on one lot, they're disturbing a lot of land, but they're only, so they'll be charged, still be charged on that per-acre fee. So, and then construction plan review fee, we had a complicated formula set up that I'd based off of Nashville, and sometimes we'd hand it to a developer or engineer, and it looked like we were handing out a pop quiz, and their eyes would get huge and like, oh, man, I don't know how to do this. So, we're trying to simplify it, boil it down, and again, we looked at what we had done in the past, and it was around $85, oddly enough, what we had charged before. So, this is the nuts and bolts of how we're going to build a subdivision, the road design, the drainage design, you know, plan and profile of everything, how you hand the plans to a contractor, and you take a raw piece of land, and you're going to develop it into a subdivision or some other project, like a construction, a commercial site, a industrial site, or something like that. So, we've changed that construction plan review fee, we just made it a flat, $250 per lot, and that kind of goes back to, can you go back to the site plan, Douglas, slide? So, before, we had a separate construction plan review fee on top of a site plan review fee. So, we thought, okay, let's kind of combine things and, and charge a higher per foot, excuse me, square foot fee for site plans. So, we're going from 2 cents a square foot for the site plans up to 10 cents a square foot. That's going to include our construction plan review fee, it's going to include Josh's review, Building Codes, Tanya and her group's review, kind of a initial review. They'll, they'll also charge, at their end, their building permit fees, once it goes to that stage, but just the initial stuff where we start talking about life safety, you know, access, are they going to need sprinklers and things like that, that the fire marshal and Building Codes needs to be involved in. So, we decided to up that fee, that's where that's, that's grown from that, and we've eliminated our commercial construction plan review fee. If you go back, Douglas. So, and then, we looked, where, what are we not charging right now? There's a couple items that we spend a lot of time. I've got three construction inspectors that are out in the field every day of the week, making sure critical items are built, are the roads compacted, are, is the proof roll done on the subgrade, is, you know, the storm drain installed correctly. So, when these projects are handed over to the highway department, we're handing over a quality road that's not going to fail next year or whatever. So, we're going to start charging $200 per lot on construction inspection, and that, we looked at several items on that. Some municipalities are charging 250 per linear foot of road. That's, you know, so if you've got a long road, you just calculate how much that would be, and then they also charge for storm drainage inspection, ditch, pipe, whatever, inspection. So, we, we didn't want to have all these different items, and again, we're trying to simplify, simplify, so we boiled it down and said, okay, we're going to charge $200 per lot for each new residential lot that's coming onboard. The, the other item that it would be a new fee would be the as-built lot release. This is, like Doug had mentioned, the resurvey of the subdivision to see that it's built according to the construction plans, to make sure it's, we don't have super-flat ditches, we don't have issues with our new infrastructure that we're overseeing. And it's been a very beneficial tool to us, and we really, really have been happy with it. This is calculating bonds as well, that the sureties that have to be put in place, the agreements that have to be put in place. So, we were going to charge $50 per lot for that. So, all in all, residential lots, construction plan review would be 250, land disturbance 250, and essentially, the new fees, construction inspection and lot release would be 250, those two items combined. So, that's, that's kind of what we were looking at on, on new construction inspection review fees, along with the, the other items that Doug had mentioned before, the zoning compliance, like, you know, Doug had mentioned that we had reviewed 1,100 zoning compliance applications. That's a lot of work. That's, like Doug said, the, is it going to be built in a bowl? Is it in a floodplain? My biggest angst is, is these FEMA buyouts, so I'd rather nip it in the bud on the front end and say, okay, you need to elevate the house, or you need to move it to another location. Is it going to be on unsuitable soil? That's where we'll let the Building Codes know, hey, this, this is some hot, suspect hydroic soil, they might need an engineered footer, or something like that. So, we do put a lot of work in these zoning compliance applications, but all in all, that's, that's where we are on the construction plan review.
And the next couple of slides go through just some cost comparisons. You know, we just kind of put some hypotheticals up there, just to give an idea of what those charges would be based on our current fees and proposed fees, what we're talking about today. And you can kind of run through those and see, you know, in a 200-lot subdivision on a preliminary plan, you know, the current charges would be $20,500, where the proposed charges would be $51,000. You know, I'm not going to read all these verbatim, but you can kind of see from that standpoint, kind of the changes that, that, that we'd be looking at should this fee structure be approved. We talked a little bit about the PUD zoning application. Right now, it's just a $1,000 base fee. If we were to add in a 200-lot rezoning PUD, then that would be $10 per lot, so you see that goes up to $3,000. So, the next slide is cost comparisons on the different sized subdivisions for land disturbance fees, which is LDP, and the construction review fees. You can kind of see on that last column there, C is current, P is proposed. So, the current fees for, again, your construction plan review, and also your land disturbance would be $11,500, and the proposed would be $25,000. For a 20-acre, 35-lot subdivision, you're looking at a change from $6,000 up to $17,500. And in a commercial lot, which we don't charge for currently, the same way, you would see the way it's done now would be, just the proposed fee would be $3,500, which you'd be looking at. And the last thing we did, we took some real-world examples, just to get a, what's a cost-per-lot review? If you look at all the plat fees that go into it, from preliminary all the way through address assignment, and you can kind of see what the current fees would be for an 11-lot subdivision. So, you're looking at basically, you know, about $5,400, a little under 55. And then the total cost per lot, now, obviously, I understand there's land, there's a lot more goes into a per-lot cost, I understand that, beyond just the county fees, but this at least gives you an idea of what the county fees we'd be looking at. Currently, we'd be looking at about $500 per lot. Under proposed fees, we're looking at about $1,400, just a little over $1,400. If you up that to a 50-lot subdivision, that's 45 acres in size, you go from the total of $22,500 to $65,000. This is including, again, the new fees are including things we don't currently charge for. That per-lot fee goes up from $450 to $1,300 per lot. And then finally, if you're doing a 218-lot subdivision, which, again, these are, this is a real-world example that we looked at, total fees you'd be looking at, you know, about $355 per lot versus about $1,264 per lot with our proposed fees. So, with that, our next section is dealing with the Building Codes, and I'm going to turn that over to our codes director, Tanya Bell. And Tanya, just let me know when you want me to go to the next slide.
Gotcha. Good morning. We're throwing a lot of numbers at you today, so, and I'm going to follow up with the same. So, if there's, at any point, you guys want to stop and talk about anything, please just yell. So, our first slide, our first slide? So, our first slide is our current building code fees. As most of you probably already know, a building permit is issued based on the type of project that's being permitted and the valuation of it. So, we determine the valuation of it by the square foot of the usable area within that project. So, for example, on the left-hand side, you'll see dollar per square foot on the top. So, we take a residential home, and we would determine how much of it was conditioned living space, how much of it might be unfinished, how much of it is garage, and then porch and deck. We take each of those, the square footage of each of those areas, multiply it by the dollar per square foot that we've got assigned here, and come up with a total valuation of the home itself. We take that valuation and then refer to the ICC chart to get the fee. So, right beneath that, you've got, we do the same thing for remodel, finishing expandable area, a moved-in dwelling, and then a storage building, and, or, on a permanent foundation and one on a, on skids. The bottom ones are plumbing, which we permit separately. We do plumbing and gas separately from the building permit, and for new construction, a plumbing permit is 135. For a remodel or a mobile home, it's 85. A gas permit fee is $30 base fee, and then $5 for each additional fixture after that. The column on the right side is flat fees, and those are pretty self-explanatory. A mobile home, swimming pool, restoration might be a burnout or water damage or something that they're restoring, a sign, a moving permit, if somebody's moving a house across town and it's greater than 16 foot wide and it has to go on county roads. We verify that they've checked in with the Middleton's Electric Comcast roads to find out there's no, to make sure there's no low-hanging wires or anything. Special foundation permit, a demolition permit, temporary parking permit would typically be for, if somebody wanted to park an RV on their property, for example, while they're building a home, we would charge a temporary parking, parking permit for that, and we'd do that for 180 days at a time. A temporary tent would be for maybe an event, a one-time event, and they wanted to put up a large tent. Portables would be a construction trailer, maybe that some, a developer wanted to set up on a construction site for the duration of the development. Beer permits, that is required by the beer board. They require Building Codes, electrical plans, planning, and septic to sign off on a beer permit. So, we issue those, we do a life safety inspection for each, each time the location changes hands. For example, if it's a gas station that sells beer, and they've got a cooking facility or something in it, and they change hands, which happens fairly frequently, we go in there and do a life safety inspection on it, just make sure that the aisles are minimum size, that the egress doors are not blocked, that their suppression system has been inspected, although I think fire does that also. Anyway, safety inspection is very similar to that. If somebody requests, maybe they're changing the use of a building and they require or request a safety inspection, we'll go in there and look for all of those things, again. Change of occupancy, reinspection fee, a temporary CFO, that would be when a builder wants a certificate of occupancy prior to the structure being completely finished, and then residential plan review. So, those are all flat fees. Does anybody have any questions on any of those? Nope, nope. All right. So, I report, I take my monthly report to the Public Works Board every month, and they have asked me to, based on the school facilities tax, which we started doing, this is our, almost the end of our second full year, they asked me to calculate the average square footage of a single-family dwelling issued in Rutherford County, given that the school facilities tax is based on $1 per square foot. So, they were interested to know what the average square foot of the, of a single-family dwelling issued in Rutherford County. For the last couple of years, that stayed pretty steady, right around 24 to 2,500 square feet. So, I went to other jurisdictions to try and determine, I took a 2,500-square-foot house with a 500-square-foot attached garage and 200 square foot of porches and decks, which is a pretty average single-family dwelling issued in Rutherford County. So, I took those, that criteria, and I went to, I think about 12 or 14 different jurisdictions, you can see them listed on the left, to find out what the building permit would cost for that size home in that jurisdiction, and then how they calculate their fees. So, the total valuation of that home, that 2,500-square-foot home, in using our current method, our current building permit fees, the valuation came out to $308,930. So, I just kind of wanted to keep that in mind. You can see that Rutherford County, next to the city of Murfreesboro, is the lowest in all of these fees that I calculate, or that I researched. And most of them, about half of them, based their valuation on a flat, a flat dollar square foot. The others, in some form or fashion, came up with a valuation and then referred to the chart the way we do. So, reading that, has anybody got any questions on any of those? So, before I leave this page, I took all of these permit values, or all these permit fees, and I took the average of them. And the average of all of these fees was $1,750. So, the highest, obviously, is City Franklin, theirs was $2,304. They calculate theirs at a flat rate of 72 cents for everything under roof, whether it's heated, cooled, garage, unfinished, it didn't matter. All right, next slide. So, given that same 2,500-square-foot house with a 500-square-foot garage and 200-square-foot porches and decks, I went to the internet, and I went to Realtor.com and Zillow, and I tried to find what was currently available in Rutherford County. So, I've got Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne, and then I could only find one in Eagleville. So, it was hard to find ones, homes that were for sale for exactly 2,500, so I went plus or minus 100 square feet. So, I looked for anything from 24 to 2,600 square feet. I looked at the square footage of the home, how much the sales price was, and the dollar per square foot. So, you can see that they were, they ranged anywhere from 433 was the lowest to... So you can see that they were, they ranged anywhere from 433 was the lowest to, I want to say 590, yeah, 594 was the highest. So I'm all about averages. On the right-hand side, I took the average square foot of that square, of those homes that I had looked at, and it was 2,506, so it was just right where I needed it to be. The average sales price was 522 and 71, and the average price per square foot was 208. So that 522, 522,071 cents, based on the valuation, is actually 69% higher than what we currently charge, the 308,000 that was on the previous screen. Does anybody have any questions about that? I'm sorry, I'm throwing lots of numbers, trying to keep it straight in my own head. Next screen, Doug.
Tanya, I have, I have a question, please. Sorry to interrupt, because you've got a lot of research in here. But the fee, going to the 69% higher than total valuations, but the total valuations are based on construction value, right?
The total value, these are total, total sales value.
That's the value of sales.
Our valuation is right.
Based on construction, the permits are based on the construction value.
Well, that's what I thought, yeah.
But your sales value is based on the land and the driveway and all those other things, right?
Yeah, so that's what I, that's what I thought, too. That's, I've been doing this 23 years, and that was always my assumption. So if you, can you go back to the screen, too, Doug? So when I went to these 10 or 12 jurisdictions, there was probably at least two of them that took the sales valuation of the home. And as I talked to other building officials and stuff, it was mixed. Some people interpret the code, to say total valuation, as everything, the land, the driveway, the utilities, and some are like, what's her name again? No, kidding. And they just take the construction value of it. So it can go either way, and that's why I did an average. So I felt like the average is, is a good. And also in my research, I also kind of researched how much, and there's no set number, but industry-wide, the standard is about 80 to 85% is construction value versus sales price. Would you agree with that?
For a minute, I think-
And I mean, there's lots of variables, and that's why I couldn't come up with, with a definitive number.
Yeah, I think, I think generally, a lot cost, the value of the lot is about 20 to 25% of the sales cost, but of course, some rural lots, land, you get into 5, 10, 15 acres, they're much different, and they have longer driveways and utility runs.
Right. So like I said, some of, some of the jurisdictions take the total sales value, and that's what they base their permit price on, and some of them take, will do it per square foot. And really, there's no way to tell what the true construction value is, because it could change from Williamson County to Rutherford County, and it could change from the north end of Rutherford County to the south end, it really just... Screen forward, Doug. So my, the numbers that I'm giving you guys today are strictly information. So I took that 69% difference on that 2,500-square-foot home, and I increased each of our fees exactly 69%. Now you'll notice over on the flat fees, I rounded it up or down, because some of them come in at some odd numbers, like the $85 come in at 138 and some cents, so I just rounded it up to 140. So our sample home, using our current fees, is 1,085, excuse me, 1,087, and then our sample home, using the new fees, come in at a permit cost of 1,700. And the reason that's not exactly 69%, because some of you might have your calculators out, is because our, the ICC fee chart, as the value of the home increases, it gives allowances. For example, at the 0 to 50,000 is $5 per thousand, 50 to 100,000 is $4 per thousand, and then it continues to decrease, the larger the valuation of the home, the less per thousand the fee chart. So that's why the 1,700 isn't exactly 69% of the 1,087. All right, next, next slide. So of the, I'm just going to read this, of the examples given in the previous screen, half of the jurisdictions we looked at uses the flat rate per square foot under roof, and that range was anywhere from 35 cents to 72 cents per square foot, equating to permit costs of 1,130 to 2,304 for that same 2,500-square-foot example that I'd been using. So the average permit fee calculated from all of those jurisdictions, it was, was 1,750. Using that permit fee and taking the total square footage under roof, the 2,500, the five, and the two, would equate to 3,200 square foot under roof. To achieve that 1,750 permit fee, that equates to 55 cents. So the average dollar per square foot that, so I took the average permit fee, 1,750, and I divided that by 3,200, which was our 2,500 square foot, so that fee would come out to 55 cents a square foot. Does that make any sense? So, and this is actually, I'm just giving you some options, based on what we currently do, and what we could do, and what other folks are doing in other jurisdictions. So the advantages to the fee, flat fee per square foot, is that when it's less than a dollar of the cost per square foot, so when you say to a builder, your permit fee's going to cost you 57, 55 cents per square foot of your structure under roof, it tends to be a little more palpable than, you know, our fee is going to be 55 cents of the $210 per square foot that you're charging, that this home is going to cost, the permit fee is 55 cents of that per square foot. I feel like it's just a little more palpable. It would also make it a lot easier for the applicant, whether it's a builder or a homeowner, to calculate the potential cost of their building permit before they come into our office, so that there's no surprises. Currently, we have to do a lot of calculating, based on that very first screen that you've seen with all the different fees and all the different square footages. People usually call into our office to find out what their permit fee's going to, going to cost them, because it's just easier for us to calculate it quickly than it is for them to go through it. So the disadvantages to this, this method is that it really only works for new construction. Obviously, a remodel, we couldn't charge the same 55 cents per square foot on a remodel, or an accessory structure, or porches and decks and stuff, because obviously, they don't, they don't take as much resources. So, next screen, Doug.
The disadvantages, Tanya, that you just mentioned, we could come up with different fees for those things.
Absolutely. We can reduce, sure, we can reduce the cost, we could maybe revert back to a square, our fee, the current fee that we use, and use the square footage and go to the ICC table. There's multiple different ways you could do it.
New construction adds to roads, schools, everything. Remodeling doesn't add to anything.
Correct.
So it would have to be a different schedule, in my mind.
Right. Additions, you know, are obviously adding to the size of the home, increasing the size of the home, so, you know, when you take a 2,500-square-foot and add 1,000 square feet.
Yeah, but you're, you also have an existing home, and you're not, once again, adding to the infrastructure, or-
And a remodel, yeah. Yeah, I agree. Yep. And then finally, option three, based on the fact that there is no allowance in the ICC chart for houses that are larger in size, so a house that's 2,000 square feet may not be the same price per square foot, or have the same finishes and stuff in it than a 7,500-square-foot house. So some of the jurisdictions use a tier or a sliding scale based on the square footage of the home. So 0 to 1,999, and these are just examples, have a $175 base fee, and then a dollar per square foot on top of that, and then 2,000 to 3,499, and so forth. And I think that, oh, oh. All right, so that does it for residential. That's how we calculate, and that's some options to increase. And, by the way, our, the last fee change that we had was, the current fees that we have were adopted in, on July 1st of 2016. So back then, 308,000 for a 2,500-square-foot house was, was pretty average. So next screen, Doug. The items for which we currently do not issue a permit, but we likely should, is mechanical permits are, and always have been, as long as I've been at the building codes department, included in the building permit fee. But as I was looking through the jurisdictions and getting building permit fees and stuff, 100% of them issued a separate mechanical permit. So I feel like this is a good time to incorporate something like that. Solar panel permits are becoming more and more popular, and we would have to, as solar, solar panels are installed, we have to check the roof and the integrity of the roof to make sure it'll support the weight of solar panels. And retaining wall permits, if they're separate from an active building permit, which we don't see very often, typically, we'll see retaining wall permits included in a basement house, or, or somebody that's putting in a swimming pool, and they want to hold back some dirt. And the final slide is for commercial building permit fees. If you'll recall, back in September of 2020, I went to the county commission and increased our commercial fee table, our fee schedule to, it was, I believe it hadn't been updated since 2003 or 2006, and we updated it in September of 2020. ICC updates their commercial fee schedule twice a year, in February and August of every year. So in 2020, we used the February fee chart of 2020. I checked today's chart, the most recent one, which was February of '23, and it's approximately 6.5% higher across the board than the one that we currently have adopted. So our current plans review fees, for commercial, we do a plans review on every single commercial project that we issue a permit for. $125 for a minor, and I would consider a minor, maybe the shale of a, somebody that wanted to sublet some units, and they're just building the shale of it, or storage units, mini storage, or something like that, that don't have any utilities, and they don't have any egress or anything like that to worry about. And then 500 for a major plans review, and that would, that would be anything else, really, church, office building, anything like that. So those haven't been updated, probably 20 years, so we probably should consider updating those. I suggest 250 to 750, 250 for a minor and 750 for a major. And that concludes my-
We know this was a lot of information to, to pass along, so obviously, if there's questions, we're more than happy to talk through some of these and kind of the methodology we use looking at some of this.
Doug, back at one point in my planning commission career, we had a budget committee, I'm assuming that we still do, but I'm not on that anymore. So I'm wondering how our revenues match up with our annual expenses. So are, are we covering what it costs to do these? Because I see a lot of things that are very, very time-consuming and don't cost very much, but I also see requests for some things on here that seem like an awful big price. I mean, if, well, I won't go into those details yet, but it, yeah, are we covering our expenses, basically, with the current model that we have?
Right. Well, and let me, before I get into that, let me just answer your, your first comment that you made about the budget committee that we used to do. We got rid of that several years ago, so it hasn't been that you were not on the committee, there's just, there's not a committee anymore. So, yeah, we, we did away with that. To answer your question about, are we meeting our expenses under our current model, the answer is no. When we used to have development tax as part of ours, I would say, then yes, but if you just look at our Platten Plan Review rezonings, everything like that, our budgets, our revenue that we take in is maybe a third of what our expenses are. So a lot of what we're doing here is trying to cover our costs, just from the planning and engineering standpoint. Now, I won't speak for building codes, but from our standpoint, our current model does not recoup the costs of the expenses that we incur.
So it seems like at one time, we were running a, pretty close to neutral. We were trying to get our revenues the same as expenses. So dollar-wise, what kind of money are we looking, we come up as a deficit every year?
Well, of course, a lot of it depends on activity, and I want to preface that with, when we look at these fee increases, based on what we're looking at right here on our, our current budget numbers, looking at what the proposed fees are, we'd be pretty close to breaking even. Again, I don't think we ever really did break even when you looked at the amount of expenses coming out of our office versus the fees that we were in taking. So, under this current model, would we be close to breaking even? Maybe not 100% close, not, not there completely, but a lot closer than we are currently. You know, right now, like I said, it's probably over, you know, it's probably a million-dollar difference between the fees we take in versus the expenses that we incur. But with this model, it's, it's a lot closer to break even. So we have put some numbers together, right? If you were to use 2022 numbers, and just took those proposed fees and kind of plug that into what the current fees are, we'd be looking at roughly about 1.6 million total, is what we'd be looking at, right in that, in that neighborhood. And that includes the new fees that we would charge for, that we aren't currently charging for, so we had to do some estimating on that regard.
Commissioner, I, I sit in the meeting, was it Thursday? Thursday or Friday?
Thursday.
With the mayor, when we looked at these figures for, I guess for the last time, but since we brought them to y'all. And he asked the same question, said, where does this bring us as far as where we are with our cost? And that's what we're seeing, that we are now at that, almost that break-even point. We sat there and discussed this, and went back and forth with everybody around the table. It's, it's hard to believe the amount of time that's involved today in what we do over there in planning and codes. When, when you look at the number of what comes before us right here, and what's brought up there, and, and the thing that catches my attention is the number of items that are brought to them, that they have to go through, that never makes it this far, that we never see. Because when they go through it and see it, it, it just doesn't cut muster, I guess is what I have to say at it. And, and, but they still have to review it, they still have to see it, they have to go through these things. And there's so many items that, that before it ever comes to the final plat that we get to see right here, it's gone back and forth, back and forth, just like when we discuss things here about roads and things of this type. So there, there's so much involved.
And I think my concern is making sure that the, an individual fee for one thing, in other words, construction may take a lot of time and resources, automobiles, and construction inspections out in the field, that that fee is high enough to cover that, and we're not having someone else with a minor application subsidizing something that should be, that is expensive to administer, in other words. So I'm just trying to make sure that they're proportional to our expenses, each individual fee.
Right. So if we had one of these subdivisions that did not have any new infrastructure, there wouldn't be no construction inspection fee placed on that developer. If he's just carving up land and just building a driveway, not a private street, public street, or something like that, there, there would be no construction inspection. There would be land disturbance for each house, but not construction inspection, or as-built inspection, because you're not reviewing anything that hasn't been built.
Mr. Kush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Jim, thank you for asking that question, because that, that cleared some things up that I want to ask Doug and Tanya and Mr. Hughes. So Commissioner, all the commissioners, Gooch, Reed, myself, and Chairman Phillips, let me make sure I'm clear, that the four of us are clear. We initially asked the Public Works Committee, which I'm chair, to look at potential ways to increase revenue, to help offset the infrastructure and school costs that the developers aren't helping us with. And one of the avenues, we thought, was to perhaps increase the fees of permitting and codes. thought was to perhaps increase the fees of permitting and codes. But this exercise, I think, has shown us that we have been running at a deficit, right? Your department has been running at a deficit. And in order to at least run in the black or somewhat neutral, these fees need to be increased at these proposed rates that you showed us today to be somewhat revenue neutral, right?
Correct. Now, again, I go back to, this is based on past numbers, you know. Obviously, if things slow down, I mean, there's nothing we can do about that. You know, the fees are what they are, but if nobody's submitting plans, we're just not taking in the revenue.
Right.
But go on.
Right. Okay. So, and I want to make sure I clearly understand that the, and the other three commissioners understand, that you, you guys are understaffed, in my opinion. Tanya, I would bet that you would like to have another person or two on board, based on the current volume of work that comes in. So these fees include new staff for the upcoming budgeting year?
Yes, our goal was to, to cover the new people.
Okay. So the, again, I'm, I'm trying to detach, you know, the, the development side versus your side. So these fees, I've hit a roadblock, because our intention or our thought was, we're going to try and increase fees really so the developers will have to pay more so we can do more with schools and infrastructure. But it sounds like that is at a dead end at this point, unless, unless we're going to raise these fees to get you covered, and then the commission is going to come back and say, well, that's great, but we're going to raise these even higher to more like a Murfreesboro City level or Wilson County level, which we can still do. But I just want to make sure that I'm clear
Yes, sir.
That these proposed fees are just for your department to get in the black.
Right. Yes, sir.
Okay? And to add the staff that you have proposed to the mayor that you need for this upcoming budget year. Tanya, are you in agreement with that?
So my department's a little bit different in that we have been charging, obviously, building permit fees for years and years. We went up in our fees in July of 2016, which put us in the black for a couple of years. Since about 2018, 19, we've got that gap between my budget and my expenses is getting smaller and smaller. I anticipate this year I'm going to flip upside down. So these fees, yes, will help me cover, project in the next couple of years, the growth that I'm going to need within the department, for sure.
Okay. Okay. And, and one more thing before I yield is, we have the ability, full commission has the ability to change these fees at any time, correct? We're not bound by the state that it can only be done so many times a year or so many calendar years in advance, right?
Correct.
We could change, we could change these next month, up or down, right?
Yes.
Anytime. It's at our, it's at our whim.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, and Doug, just to make sure I'm clear, I did some, some simple math. Based on your 218 lot example, your 50 lot example, and your 11 lot example, the 218 lot example, with your new fees, you're increasing $918 per lot, give or take. Your 50 lot example, you're increasing $860 per lot fee. And your 11 lot example, you're increasing $940 per lot fee. So that's to cover your cost. Now, the city made it clear in the D N J that they are agreed to propose, they have agreed to up their development fees, they are in a second negotiation to determine what those fees are, but a good guess would probably be about $7,500 a lot, maybe?
That's our understanding.
Yeah, okay. Well, we're a long ways from $7,500 a lot. So we're, we're at what? $2,000 a lot? $2,500 a lot?
Not even that, $1,500, $1,400.
Yeah.
And it looks like as you, as more lots, the cost per lot actually goes down a little bit. So you've noticed that $1,400 for an 11 lot, $1,300 for the 50, and then $1,264 for the 200. So the larger the subdivision, of course, the more lots you have to break it down amongst, so.
Okay. So I, I want to thank you for all the hard work and math and ciphering that both departments have put into this. This, this helps me now understand that you need this just to be operating outside the red. To me, the next step is, okay, now, now what are we going to do to help this county go beyond and get some roads and schools built with some developer money, with some additional fees? So this now gives me a baseline, gives us three commissioners a baseline. So I appreciate that. But be prepared, I'm, I'm happy to agree with this fee to get you covered, but dad gum, I'm going to ask for some additional fees for the developing world.
Sure. Coming to planning and public works next.
Thank you, Commissioner Kush. Kind of what was going through my head, and I had no idea the, the fees were so low and was not covering close to the cost. And so I, I agree that these fees probably need to be approved as presented. But we could use the ideas to choose one fee, and it could be, say, the final plat is going to be $5,000 a lot, or 7,500. And that's where we could help with school construction and so forth. And so I guess the question would be, from, coming from this commission, this body, would we add on that, or just approve this as presented and let Public Works pick up on what an additional fee would be?
I'm not sure we have to approve anything, right?
Well, this is really just for, yeah, this is for your information. You know, the Public Works and the county commission, the full commission can take up the fees without input from the planning commission. This was really more of for your information, courtesy kind of a situation. No, we're, we want to keep you in the loop, but I agree with Commissioner Phillips. I don't think it's necessary that you make a recommendation one way or the other.
This is primarily a worksheet, I think, what you're, for Public Works.
But we, we could, if we wanted to send a message to Public Works, that we're in agreement that these fees need to be increased as presented. We could make a motion to send.
Yes, there's nothing preventing you from doing that.
Yes, there's, as Commissioner, of this committee, you could do that.
Mr. Chairman, based on the discussion you had with, that you referenced with the mayor and Doug and the group last week, what is the goal of the next, next steps? Is this to be presented to?
Public Works.
Public Works and then?
Full Commission.
Full Commission as, is the goal to make any changes based on what you've already gotten feedback from today that would be different from what we see before it goes to Public Works? Or is this pretty much your proposal on the table that everybody's considered and looked at, that, again, brings you basically back to whole?
Right. And, you know, this is the same presentation we'll make to the Public Works Committee next week. Now, if you've got other suggestions, I mean, obviously during our presentation to Public Works, we can say we've, you know, made this presentation to the planning commission, these are some thoughts that they had to consider as well.
We will need to go to budget committee as well.
As well, that's correct.
I think the thought is identical to what Chairman Kush said earlier. This is the recommendation and a baseline recommendation for what the planning department needs. And anything that the county commission wants to do, they can do, or potentially they can do. So I, I think this recommendation is that baseline, Commissioner Kush. I heard that, I think I heard you say that, and I agree with that 100%. And then it's up to the county commission to either accept it or to increase it at any particular point in time that they feel necessary. So this baseline, I, I think is a, a good place to start. Then the county commission, as far as increasing revenue, would make decisions beyond that. I think it's a pretty good, pretty good place to start. The only suggestion I would have, Tanya, would be for those add-ons, okay, that there be some, something put in there that, you know, that instead of, it could be done, I'd like to see that done, some recommendation. Or we could kind of take a look at that. I'm all for new construction as far as increasing those fees, but when you talk, talk about remodeling or things like that, you're not adding to infrastructure and you're not adding to the cost of schools or anything else. So I, I want that to be, at least this commissioner wants that to be reasonable.
Correct.
And I, I don't know what reasonable means, but you guys are really good at doing that. But I'd like to see something before it goes to Public Works, some kind of structure.
Some allowances in there for that type of construction, sure.
If that can be done.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Tanya, you mentioned that in, within like two years, you were already in the red again. I mean, it was, it didn't take very long at all. Is there?
So 2016 is when we increased our fees. This year is probably the first year that I will be upside down.
Okay.
It's that gap between my revenue and my budget, what started in 2016 when they increased the fees was comfortable, and then it started to get smaller and smaller. This year is probably the first time I'll, and I won't know what my total revenue is until obviously June 30th, but it's the first time it's looking like it'll be upside down.
Because just thinking through this and for the future, I didn't know if there's a way to put in a percentage increase, an annual percentage or something that would help from having to come back every time to do this. I don't know if that's even allowed or what would be, may or may not be allowed.
I'm not 100% sure either, but I do know that all these fees go into our general fund, and the expenses of the department comes out of general fund. So I don't know if they could control actually a, a neutral type of thing, make those recommendations. And I really expect the department to do those things, to keep us updated, to make sure that, that we're not operating in the red. So I would expect that that would happen. But what we collect goes into the county's general fund, and the expenses that this department creates comes out of the general fund. So making it at least revenue neutral, since it's their fees attached to this, is an absolute must, just like Commissioner Everwater was saying earlier. And, and then what the county commission feels like they need as far as revenue, then I think it's up to the county commission to add on top of that. At least that's the way I'm envisioning, and I heard Commissioner Kush say the exact same thing. And I, I think Commissioner Gooch said the exact same thing, too. So to me, this is, this is where we need to start. This is what you need, and then the county commission will make the decision as to what they need on top of that. Does that make sense, Doug?
Yes, sir, I believe it does.
Does that also make sense, Mr. County Attorney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And that's good. I heard it the same way you all did, too. I was hearing this presentation thinking, if that's just what gets us back to even, then that's not going to go anywhere toward infrastructure. And so we need to continue on from there. So I'm behind that as well. Thank you.
The other discussion. Doug, we appreciate your time and going over this, because a lot of time has been spent on this by our staff and, and going through this. And this will be presented to Public Works to go from there. Any other business needs to come before?
Just real brief. Under the adjournment, you'll see that there's a, just a general statement there about our next planning commission meeting being on May the 8th. We did not receive any rezoning applications this month at our last deadline. So we could sit here and stare at each other for an hour or two if you guys really want to, or we can take the night off. So I'll leave that up to you, how you want to handle that.
If no applications are received, we will not meet, if that's okay with everyone.
And not for that meeting for a special session or anything, but for future, could we look into the details of what we've been dealing with today as far as the multiple driveways and how we can address that?
Yes, sir.
Because I think everybody's in agreement that a private road even to access those types of developments, I don't know if there's a cutoff in lots or configuration or what it needs to be, but I think we need to explore that, because I've always had heartburn about those. But yet, if they meet the regulations, I feel like I'm obligated to approve those.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. If, if there's some, some way we can look at something or, or make a progress on those, I think that would be great.
Yeah, well, let, let me just propose this. Why don't we, like during our, one of our day meetings, like today, just come up with a, just kind of an overview of how we handle those, and then maybe some recommendations of some changes that could be made? Because that, that's primarily in our subdivision regulations, which that's a little bit different process than like a rezoning change or a change to our zoning ordinance. So, but yeah, that's what I would recommend.
And I, and I do see that as a challenge, is there, I don't think there's a one size fits all, but I think if we can come to a consensus on how to deal with those access wise, I'm all for reducing the number of points for ingress egress, just from a state road perspective. The, the less points you, of conflict that you have on a roadway, the better. And so if we can come up with something there that may help us, we appreciate that. Thank you.
We'd be happy to look into that.
This just wouldn't help us. It would also help our road superintendent as well, because he goes through this quite often, too. Another thing I was sitting here thinking about a while ago, those roads don't even, don't even come on our road maps. And I'll explain to you that sometimes the developers will name those roads, they'll put a road sign out there, but all it takes is one storm, one car hitting that road sign, and it's gone. And then you'll have those individuals on that road calling the road superintendent, calling the commissioner, or somebody say, hey, I need a new road sign, they can't find where I live. And then you have to tell them, say, well, that's not a county sign, we don't make those, we, we don't have those. But Superintendent Brooks has been really nice, because he can't make them like the rest of the county road signs. They can't look the same. In other words, they can't be blue, green, or whatever we have. So he's actually, at times, has found a different color sign to, to put up there to name those signs, because I know he's done it out my way. But, but I've actually had those people come, and I feel so sorry for them, that have come here. And I know, we put in here, it's in your deed, it says this and whatever. I have to say, I've, I've lived in different places and different houses. I don't know how many of you have ever read, when you're closing all that paperwork, have you read every bit of that and know that? And I guarantee you, the realtor didn't tell you, oh, by the way, you're responsible for that road out there. It just doesn't happen that way. And, and we get into a lot of situations, and they want to know why I go down here and visit my friend in that subdivision, and the county fixes that road, why don't they fix mine? Then you'll have to explain to them what they've gone through. And it's, it's just a difficult situation. Whenever it becomes a private road, it, it happens that way. Anything else? At, at this time, it is canceled. If that's it, we are adjourned.